Good afternoon, fellow board members, Mr. Garza, Ms. Benavides, and Ms. Morales, district staff, and public joiners today. Time is 12:30 PM on this, the sixth day of June 2024, and I call this special call meeting of the United Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. May the trustees present please announce their name for the record.
Ricardo Rodriguez present.
Elisa Flores Rodriguez present.
Javier Montemayor present.
Frank Castillo present.
Thank you, and myself, Romino Vargas III. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted according to the Texas Open Meetings Act. John, I have two things to be pledged allegiance and Texas pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united by, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. On this Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, united by, one indivisible.
Mr. Valdez, just for the record, Ms. Molina and Mr. Aguilar have both mentioned that they had some work commitments. They're going to try to make it, but that may be the reason that they're not here.
Yes, thank you. John, I have three public comments. Do we have any comments, Seidel?
Yes, Mr. Valdez, we do have three comments. The speakers do get three minutes. First, we have Mr. Luisa Lagarza from TSTA regarding the compensation plan.
Good afternoon, sir. Time is 12:32. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board. For the record, my name is Wado Lagarza, the president of TSTA. I'd like to first say that I do understand the financial situation UISD is currently facing. However, the employees at UISD are also facing dire economic straits with no revenue to turn to, or rather, no avenue to turn to for extra revenue. Unlike a district which may amend its programs, personal budget, those working on fixed incomes must come up with a creative means to come up with to make up for their monthly revenue. I am asking the UISD board members to take the lower level employees into consideration as they are working on an even smaller budget than many of those other UISD employees. They should be able to be provided with livable wages so that they may be able to provide for their families. I'm aware that corporations are posting record earnings and yet continue to increase prices due to an alleged inflationary index. Those who cannot keep up with the rising prices about should be given priority. Therefore, I ask for hourly employees starting pay to be moved to $15 an hour. I too ask for other district employees who are also facing economic issues that be provided inadequate pay raises for the upcoming '24-'25 academic school year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So I also thank you for your comments. Second speaker, Mr. Robin.
Mr. David Betis regarding the wellness days and the pay increase.
Mr. Betis, good afternoon, sir. Time is 12:33. You have three minutes, sir.
Good afternoon, board members, members of the audience, administrators in charge. For the record, my name is David Betis, president of Texas Classroom Teachers, United Classroom Teacher Association. And I know that, as was mentioned before, we have our budget struggles. And what you might do today might be just a little bit of help to our employees, and we appreciate it. Hopefully, when the legislature meets next year, maybe we can get something sort of retroactive back. I would also like to thank the board for consideration of the wellness days for, you know, our employees. Our teachers and employees have been very stressed, and sometimes they need days to go get some help. So again, that's very much appreciated. I would like to, with your permission, just a couple of items. I'd like to thank the board for approving our EBC recommendations last meeting. We strive to keep the cost down. There was only one item that had increases, and that's our EBC, working hard to keep things, you know, in line, especially our health insurance. No changes, no modifications, no nothing. And I would also like to recognize the fact that we, the public, can come up here, we can have civil discourse, we have that right to speak for or against something. And on this 80th anniversary of a D-Day, we should remember all those people that gave their lives, you know, all veterans, of course, but all those in World War II. There's only 119,500 left, veterans left, and they're dying at 131 a day. And a lot of them, or a few of them, went, did go to Normandy. So, you know, see, and they're all over 100, well, a couple of 97, but they probably joined at 14, snuck in there. But again, let's, let's remember why we're able to have these discussions, you know, we have those rights, those people died for our rights to, to have civil discourse. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Betis. Your comments.
Mr. Valdez, the last comment is from Jorge Mendozza related to the compensation plan and wages for hourly workers.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mendozza. Time is 12:36. You have three minutes, sir.
Okay. The administrators, board members, everybody here. So I'm basically here, and I haven't looked at the tax rule, so I know that our revenues come from the per-employees and the tax rules. But we need to take into consideration our lower-level employees, okay? We can't be paying them $10, $10 an hour, $11. Those people need to be paid $13, $14 an hour, where they can go out to HEB, be able to make their electric bills and not have all these outside jobs. I see a quote that, that I see him at the basketball games, and, and he works there, I'm sure, and, and the next day I go get my taco at Stryk, and, and he's there working, making the taco. So he's working overtime at the basketball games, he's making his taco there, sure, his pain, getting paid there, but we should be able to afford him to be a livable wage, where he can provide for his family and, and not have to work and be able to be able with his kids and, and spend time with them, not just. No, let's look at it. Like I say, I don't know how much money we have. I need to look at the tax rules. She has a better idea, but let's take into consideration those lower-level employees. We always say, oh, the bus drivers, they're the first one to look at the kids, and, and I see the ladies directing traffic, and the ladies, when I sometimes go to school for whatever, my wife, she's a substitute, sometimes I go for whatever, and the ladies are all there, and sometimes they're putting in beans to, to, in place of the substitutes. Come on, pay them, pay them a little bit more. Let them have a livable wage. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mendozza. Further comments?
No further comments, sir.
Thanks, sir. Item four is items for information only, so that are a budget 2024-2025 update.
Good afternoon, Mr. Valdez, members of the board, members of the audience. We're just going to have a real quick budget update. I think, can you?
I'm trying to see if we can get the clicker over here.
So, so just real quick. Oh, sorry. I guess I should. Okay. So just to remind the board, this is TEA requirements about our budgets, since we have a fiscal year-end of August 31st, we prepare, we'll prepare a budget by August 20th, adopt a budget by August 31st, and these are the three funds that you need to adopt at a fund and function level, the general operating, debt service, food service, and adopt a tax rate. Right now, you can see the calendar to get us to August 21st, where we expect to have a public hearing, adoption of the budget, and possible tax rate. This is where we'll get to the end of summer. At this point, I'm going to turn it over real quickly to Sam. He's going to talk about, Sam Flores, he's going to talk about our revenues.
Good evening, Mr. Vali, or good afternoon, Mr. Valdez, members of the board. As you all know, there are three main sources in the school district for revenue. It's local, state, and federal. We'll review the local revenue. We have preliminary values from the Webb County appraisal district. We've got them towards the end of July, of August, and we saw a slight increase of 1.92%, which is about $26 billion worth in values. The main contributing factor was, there were two items. The mineral values dropped by 25%. We've been in those days where mineral values can shoot up by 35% for two or three years and then drop by, you know, the 25% that's happening for what we're projecting out to be for next year. What saved it from not being an overall loss in value was every other property value that we have on our roll went up 10%. So this is a net effect of an increase of 1.92%. And at the same time last month, TEA, they're getting better with their maximum compressed rate. If you all know, this is a new rate that the state calculates. It's pretty much, in a short explanation, an average of all the school districts' tax rates from the prior year with, with a little bit of a growth factor for, to make it more, more current. And the state released it. Right now, it's at .6855 cents, and the rule is, when you look at the school district's tax rate, you have to take, that's why it's called maximum compressed rate, you have to take the lesser of the two, which one is more compressed, right? So our tax rate was 66 point, 66 cents. So we're, right now, preliminarily, where our numbers are showing that we're going to maintain the same tax rate. The events that have happened over the last couple of years, you've all have known that our interest income has pretty much been minimal. The Fed Fund rate has been hovering at zero or a little bit above zero for many, many years. Last year, it went up above to five, five and five and a quarter. We've been looking at our investment portfolio, and we're at about 5.28% on interest income. Last month, if you know, we knew we were going to recognize and end this year with more revenue in interest income, so we brought you a budget amendment to recognize that interest income, and we allocated it to expenditures that we feel we're going to need to get us through the end of the year. So it's only the, the second year that they've been at a Fed Fund rate of over 5%. So this year, we're expecting to end at 4.6 million. We're conservatively putting 4.7 million. Let's get through these next couple of months. We have to present to you a final budget in August. By then, we feel we might be a little closer to five, a little bit above 5%. But we've got to see to make sure that the Fed's going to hold this rate. All indications are showing that they are. When we go to state revenue, you all, you all remember, everything is based off of enrollment. We don't get funded off of enrollment, but that's our first number, what, what's going to be the enrollment for UISD. Then we all, we do a trend analysis on our average day attendance, and as you all know, we used to be a 96% attendance school district. Now we're down to a 91% attendance school district. So we have the numbers here, where we have projected enrollment of 41,237 students. We had a peak enrollment of 41,193 students on October the 13th. We feel our projection, though, is pretty strong, even, even though it's a little higher, but we, we feel that's going to be the enrollment that we can prepare a budget off of for '24- '25. And the good news is that we have a, a record percentage of students already enrolled for next year. It's 99.59% from Ms. Martinez's staff, Gama Martinez's staff. They really hit it hard these last several months to make sure that almost all of our students have enrolled in UISD, so that's a very positive start, that we hope we're going to get us to that, that enrollment of 41,237 students. Now, the trick is, we got to get them to come to school, because that's the beginning number, but we're going to get funded off of how, how many days they actually attend school. So currently, we're at 91.4%. If you remember, at the beginning of this year, we budgeted at 93. We used to budget at 94 and a half, but obviously with the trends, and we all know it, that that percentage is coming down. So for next year, we lowered it to 92.5%. So although I just praised Ms. Martinez, I'm actually challenging her. I was told, I was told she was not going to be here today, but, so I apologize. But there's a whole team behind her, and everybody that you see here is behind her as well, and it's a target that, that we're definitely going to hit. So our proposed state revenue, it went up to $210 million from $208 million in the last legislative session. You all remember, we have a tax rate, then we get golden pennies and super pennies and all those extra pennies. Well, those extra pennies are a tier one, but a level-two funding. And in that level-two funding, the state did approve one from $1.26 per weighted average day attendance to $1.29. So that's, that's the only new revenue that we're getting, and, you know, the story has been from the state that the governor's holding on to the money. It's there, it's already in cash, it's sitting there, you all know about the vouchers, and, and the complaining about him not getting his vouchers, so he's withholding funding. But thank God, they did approve, and they voted on and approved an increase in, in the level-two, in these enrichment pennies that we're talking about here. When we go to federal revenue, the, the main components of federal revenue is the Sharers program through the Medicaid program. Our indirect costs is when we help federal programs run their, their program. We are allowed to charge an additional percentage to collect overhead off of the, off of those federal monies that we get. The Head Start program, ROTC reimbursements. So for '24-'25, we're projecting to get, make about $8.8 million, and in this year, we budgeted $7 million. That increase is mainly due to Sharers. We're providing a lot more services, and there has been an increase in what we're allowed to bill based on the services that we're providing to these students, so we feel there's a little cushion there to, to project that, a little bit more revenue.
So then, thank you, Sam. Thank you, Sam. So now, the next section is our expenditures, and we can really pretty much divide our expenditures by payroll and non-payroll. And so for our payroll expenditures, this includes all the salaries for our campus, non-campus positions, and our part-timers. There you'll see the number of classroom teachers that we have, 2,621, and the other non-teaching positions. So, and also includes related payroll expenses, FICA, TRS, workers' comp, unemployment, all that goes into our payroll expenditures. And then for our benefits, it's good for the audience to know here that the, that the board has agreed to increase our district contribution for our health insurance and not pass it on to the employees. We're going to be increasing by $50 per member per month, which is about $600 per year, and the cost is going to be $3 million. So we really do have, we really do thank the board for, for approving that. And then we'll continue to provide the $25,000 life insurance policy per full-time employee. And so those are just a couple of things. And then just talking about benefits, I know the wellness days were brought up, there is an action item later on in this meeting to talk about that. The next section, just to talk about the high vacancy positions we've been experiencing this year. Bus drivers, never below 50 vacancies at any time of the year. Custodians, 103, you know, in the hundreds, and, and you'll, if, when you talk to your campus principals, you know, they are feeling it, right? And then our teacher aides. So these are the areas that we feel that will be addressed in the proposed compensation plan. Again, this is an action item that we'll be discussing as soon as I finish with the budget presentation, and it will include an adjustment of pay for certain positions to attract applicants because of these vacancies, and will reduce those vacant positions that we're just not going to fund and offset it to redirect these funds to adjust pay for these individuals that you see listed there. But Mr. Garza will, will talk more about that. So just to share a little history with, with the, with the board members and the audience, this is a picture of the last five years, 1920, which everybody knows was pre-COVID. This was a year that the state gave us some additional money, and we were able to probably at that point take advantage of any increases in our values. And so at that point, the, the board graciously gave us a, a pay raise, and there you'll see the different percentages, and that particular pay raise was about $14 million. And then COVID hit, and the unpredictability of what was going to happen with, with our revenue, at that point, the board was conservative, did a one-time payment, and then the next year of COVID, we started getting ESER funds, and so again, the, the, but we could not understand what the state was going to do for students, and students weren't coming in. At that point, the board did approve a one-time payment from ESER of 3,500, and then later on in the year, they approved a $750 payment. And so in total, that year, the, the staff got $4,250. The 3,500 did qualify for TRS because we did a resolution before June 30th, and so that one should have been included in our employees' TRS salaries. In 22-23, as our kids were coming back, I know you all remember, all those homeschool kids came back, and we, we got a little bit more additional revenue, as Sam pointed out, when enrollment goes up, and attendance, we do get more state revenue. We were able to do another pay raise, and that pay raise was at 9.3 million. And at the same time, the board had decided, you know well, we're going to do another one-time payment from our ESER funds, which was allowable, and there you see that that amount, again, that qualified for TRS, and we paid it on October 4th of 2022, and this was for all our full-time employees, and again, that was part of their TRS salary. And in 2020, 23-24, which was last year, we did pass a pay raise, which was about $11 million. I think at that point, we really felt that the, the state was not in any kind of dire straits, that they would fund school districts, but at this point, this is what we're sustaining for our, for our employees. And then just going way back, you can see that our board has always, always supported our employees in one manner or another, whether through pay raises or one-time payments, and you can kind of see the history of our district here. In 1617, that one-time payment, that's when our mineral values just plummeted, you know, the Eco Ford shell kind of slowed down, and our revenue was impacted, but at the same time, the board did pass that. And then in 2011, 2012, just recalling what happened at that time, the state was in dire straits, and so we kind of held the line there. I think that year, we even closed, or consolidated Divya Chad and Juarez Lincoln. I mean, those were really tough times, but the next year, the board came back after the state started bouncing back, they gave a one-time and a one-time payment for. So just to show that our board has in the past, you know, 12, 13 years, has always supported our employees in one way or another to try to make ends meet with our, our, with our available resources. And so the other side of expenditures is non-payroll. They total almost $70 million, and there you'll see just a breakdown of the things that we need to fund, just to keep the doors open, our campuses with the supplies they need, our extracurricular for our kids, and so that's just a quick breakdown of how the non-payroll monies are allocated. Just to talk about ESER, because that's been in the, in the, in the public or in the news, yes, ESER's going away at the end of September. We are going to move over 14 nurse aides that got hired through ESER, and six other positions that are moving to general fund, and then six other positions that are moving to federal grants, and so it'll be impacting our general fund by about $701,000.
Can I add something real quick?
Yes.
That, you know, that was a commitment from the board, that, that we were not going to lay off anybody or, or not renew them, so we do appreciate the board's support in that. There are other districts, I will share with you, that are letting people go, because that was part of the condition of hire, when, everybody knew when they signed that agreement that they potentially not get rehired. We had always worked to reduce that number as much as possible, so the reality of only having 26 people on ESER is a great testament to everybody working together to get them onto a regular paying situation, but the commitment from the board to, to make sure that we had them employed was, was very, very important.
And then the other item, thank you, Mr. Garza. And the other item, ESER-funded instructional software. This is a software that our campuses and our students were able to use, especially during COVID. And what CNI did, they, they did a teacher usage survey of these softwares to see which one were the ones that the teachers were using most, and so based on the salary, not sorry, based on the survey results, they were able to identify the software that they want to continue to use. Remember, ESER was used to recover learning loss experienced by our students. And so again, this probably will be some kind of exercise we do every year, right, to see if these softwares are being used by our students and our campuses. So we'll be adding that to the general fund to continue that instructional methods and scope and sequence that, that have these instructional softwares embedded into them. So just at this point, which is June 6th, right, and not August 31st, we're looking at our budget to be at about four expenditures of $443 million, based on the things that we presented to you. Our revenue projections that Sam talked about total up to about $427 million, and so we do expect to bring you at this point a deficit budget of about $16.5 million. And so we show our fund balance there to show that we feel that when we do bring this budget to you, that we feel we can cover it through our fund balance, and again, remember, it's projected revenues, projected expenditures, and so we would be keeping a close eye on that. These $6.5 million, about $10 million of that is really from last year's deficit budget that continued because we were not given additional funds by the state. So we do hope in January that the board, that the state, that our legislators do consider our public schools that have been without a increase in, in revenue for the last, really five years since 2019. So, so again, I just want to show you that this, you know, we have adopted deficit budgets. We adopted the $9.5 million last year, and the year before, it was $25.5 million, but remember those 1,600 students that showed up? We didn't experience a $25.5 million debt, you know, hit to our fund balance that year. So, so we were lucky that those kids wanted to come back and come to school. So just the rest of the year, we plan to hold additional budget workshops if necessary, if something else comes up, you know, maybe the legislators will fund us, I don't know, but that would be nice. We're going to receive our certified values by July 25th. We will bring you a final budget that we'll present probably at the August board workshop, and then again, we'll do the adoption of a budget and tax rate during the August board meeting. And then just, this will be the way our budget looks, the one that you adopt. This is the one from last year. So just to remember that we, we will bring you three funds to, to adopt when it's time to adopt the budget. And then this is just kind of a slide to kind of talk about. There is an action item later, but just to get an idea of a one-time salary increase, these are proposed right now, but just to know that they would qualify for TRS with the resolution we have for you all to consider, and that these are prorated to earn days by our employees. So again, this is just, this will be spoke, talked about when the item comes up. So I think we're done. That's the end of mine.
So I do want to take the time right now to thank Laida, Sam, Felipe, everybody in the accounting department, but quite honestly, to build a budget like this, it takes everybody in this room, it really does. And so whether we're getting increased revenue due to attendance, or increased revenue due to Sharers, or any other alternative funding, everybody puts their little grain of sand to be able to get it done, but more importantly, Sam and Laida being able to get this done, you know, very, very proud of, of all the effort, and, and quite frankly, we had debated a lot, we had been talking about a lot of these payments to the lower-level employees and the one-time payment. You know, my, my initial thought was, let's be a little bit more conservative, because it's still $9 million at the end of the day, but they both felt that we needed to do something for our employees, so I'm very grateful for their input to be able to get this done. So just want to give them a shout-out for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, just items for individual consideration, items of discussion, and possible to approve the proposed compensation plan for the 2024-2025 school year.
Good afternoon, Mr. Valdez, and the board members and our committee members behind me. My name is David Canales, associate superintendent of human resources. I'm here to, possible discussion and our recommendation to approve our compensation plan that we have for this year. As you've heard several times through either public comments and even through the presentation that we just heard, we're going to try to focus on our, our pay grade ones and our pay grade twos to really bump up where we need our help, which is our custodians, our bus drivers, and our teacher aides. And so let me start off first with the first item, which is the UISD teacher scale. The teacher scale, I think you have it right, right next to you. So as you could, as you know, we are in that deficit side, and so we are not able to make any adjustments to the teacher scale at this point, so everybody would just move up, the same salary that they have before, you know, unless we have good news from the state, which, you know, we haven't heard that for a while. And so if we get good news, that's something we can sit down the road and, and adjust when we need to. However, there is a plan to, to compensate them, but as a one-time payment, which will be discussed after me. So in addition, we move now on to our instructional aides. And so you saw, it was like 170-plus teacher aides that we were not able to, to hire, and that's mainly in our Fed, our Fed departments and as well as our general, general education settings. And you know, the one of the number-one comments that we've heard is that they'd rather be a sub than to be an aide, because they can make more money. And so what's happened now is we need And so what's happened now is we need the unintended consequence as we gave raises, which they're all duly, you know, we should have done that, that's fine. But the unintended consequence is we didn't keep up with the other groups. And so it's time that we bring them up. So we're looking at bringing in, increasing their pay. And that will be a total adjustment of about $282,000 by increasing their pay for this coming year if it's approved. We're also looking at auxiliary, which are your, you know, again, your bus drivers, custodians, bus monitors, grounds, trades, utility workers that are our facilities department, drivers, delivery, fixed assets. And so that, what we're planning to do is we're going to give them an increase in pay. And we're moving them on. And that's going to be an additional $1,000, $1,395,543. So as I'm reading these numbers, there's a plan to help offset some of these costs. But I want to continue. So what we're planning to do is removing these folks from $12 to a minimum, $12 minimum wherever they may be. Now, if it's below, as long as we meet the $12, then we're good. It may, you know, some may get 50 cents more, other people may get a dollar something more, just depending on where you're at at the pay scale. We're also looking at, when we talk about bus drivers, we want to give our bus drivers, move them from 12 to 15. And that is our goal. We're going to move from $13 to $15. So with that, that's if you look below, there's going to be a $2 increase for every driver. So for those drivers that are already at 15 and then you have a brand-new bus driver that shows up at 15, you know, that you're going to say, hey, I've been here for 10 years, five years, six years. So what we're going to do is we're giving everybody a 55 cents raise after that to help that adjustment. So all of this cost will help us bring them for a total, for that amount is $186,964. The bus drivers for the $2 is $357,120. Then we move at the 3A to 5A. So we just reclassified them so they could make that amount at the 15 to meet our pay scale. So that will be $112,190. So then you move on and you look at proposed reclassification. As you've been aware, we, there was reassignments of some coordinators of CNI that now went to the elementary campuses, or about 18 of them, 19 of them. And so we wanted to adjust those current APs that were there. That way they could offset and be close to those CNI folks that were at pay grade five because they're at pay grade four right now. So we want to make those adjustments and that will be a total of $160,700. So what's happened here is if you looked underneath, it says removal of vacant positions. These are positions that we can't fill. And so we went ahead and closed the mouth. And what we're going to do is we're getting those monies to help us pay for the total amount that we're going to give the bonuses for or the adjustments. So if you're really looking at it, from the $2,000, $2,494,875, we can offset $1,077,1680. And at least for the adjustment in the bottom, we just need to find the $723,195 to make that work for us. So we come with a plan, but we also come with a solution for you. And so we're hoping that this will work. And of course, we want to reward our, the folks that keep this school district running. And that's why we're asking for your approval for this.
That isn't effective delivery services on the removal of these positions?
So at this point, sir, a lot of these vacancies we've had for several years. And so we've been able to maintain services. Excuse me. We've been able to maintain services by supplementing and being able to bring some part-time help. But we do not feel that it would impact going forward. We did talk to our principals. They're all in support of this. We wish we could do more, to be quite frank with you. But going from $10 to $12, from 13 to 15, it's going to put us in a very competitive marketplace for sure. Excuse me, sorry.
If I can interject real quick, the numbers that we presented on the budget already include this, these adjusters.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just curious on the, because some of these are campus cafeteria workers. It's a campus position right there at campuses. They're not, they're not at the food service production center there.
Yes, sir, and that's a very important note because the deficit that, or the amount that we need to come up with for the general fund, because food service has its own fund.
Right.
And quite frankly, they're pretty robust. They've been able to sustain. So the only real money that we have to come up with at the end of the day is $237,000 because the child nutrition department will end up funding the difference. So it's really, when you look at the whole plan, the $2 million plus, we're only going to have to do less than 10% of that amount to be able to come up with, which we feel that we can make it up with other vacancies, other adjustments, or other things that we can do forward.
But when you say other vacancies, you're including substitutes and stuff like that? All the district itself?
Well, substitutes are pay-as-you-go type situations. But we certainly have, for example, the ESER positions. As those individuals leave, we're probably not going to replace them, right? So right there, that's $700,000. If half of those people end up retiring or leaving or moving on or getting promoted, that'll fund the difference of what we're talking about here.
And when you say the child nutrition is for the federal fund, right?
Yes, sir.
That covers that.
Yes, sir. So we don't worry too much because they have enough to cover that part of it. It's just the general fund, which again, is only $237,000 that we have to come up with.
That's why we broke it down to show you where the funding sources are, so you're aware of that.
When you present the budget, I'm not sure if this is on the. When you present the budget later, it will include some accommodations for substitutes. Am I correct?
There's some plans, there's some plans that we have for having a reward system for attendance, making sure that individuals are coming. We certainly don't want to provide any type of one-time for individuals that don't show up or that have never worked a day with us. So we'll have some kind of a tiered system to be able to do something. But that's something that we had already been discussing and that will be a part of the regular budget.
That's great. The other thing is on the CNI issue, I know that you reclassified some individuals. And keep in mind with the services that we do provide to our students, I always thought that we were going to decentralize CNI to go to the campuses. But there's some concerns among some teachers that feel that you're not giving us that service anymore. Maybe you could expand on that or explain to the public what's going on.
So, yes, can y'all hear me?
No.
Okay, here we go. So to answer your question, Mr. Castillo, we have a plan. Ms. Lesa and her team have been working on a plan for support for the campuses. We don't expect for any of the services and support that CNI had been offering our campuses to dwindle. We're not going to shortchange our campuses at all. Just like we've been asking our campuses, our teachers and our administrators to do more with less at the campuses. That's kind of the new mindset that we're going to have at CNI. We're going to have to take on additional responsibilities and do more to be able to support all of our campuses. So as a matter of fact, just this week, we had leadership with our principals and our assistant principals, our academic coordinators, our instructional coordinators. Everyone was there. The plan was shared with everyone. They shared a lot of feedback with us. I think our principals and our administrators feel heard and they're very happy that we're making positive changes to support our students. Because at the end of the day, this change, even though it was 18, 19, and actually it ended up being 15, 14 people because the others are vacancies, were going to impact about 14,000 students. So we have a plan. And again, we're not expecting to drop the level of excellence that our CNI department has always given and the level of support that they've always given our campuses. That's going to continue. It's just going to be a new structure.
The educational services are not going to be diminished?
Absolutely not, sir. Absolutely not. We're just going to have to take on more responsibilities and, you know, more work. The load is going to probably be a little bit heavier for us at the department level. But it's not going to change the services that we provide to the campuses.
We're going to help the schools where I think the load is more and then we're going to get the help there.
Exactly, sir. And that was the intention behind this.
It should balance out and then.
Exactly. That was the intention behind this plan. We talk about retention. We needed a plan to retain our administrators as well and give our administrators some relief, honestly, to be quite honest, and give them more opportunities to better support our teachers and our students. And we're spending a lot of time when it's one administrator having to do 140 ARDs, for example. And that reduces the amount of time that they get to spend in our classrooms and with our students. So that was the intention.
And also with parents, give that time to parents to.
And give the time to the parents and the community as well.
Solve any issues.
Correct.
And just to be clear, nobody was, there was no reclassification. It was just an assignment, a location assignment change at the end of the day, right? So they're going to be able to provide the services directly now at the schools instead of it being at a central location.
So their job duties did change. Their pay was not impacted. But like Mr. Garca says, even though they're going to be administrators and they're going to take on the role of the administrators as far as, you know, what an assistant principal does, they do have the background and the experience with CNI. So that is going to help them tremendously at the campus. And it was very strategic, I want to say too, based on what our coordinator strengths were and what the need was at the campus. That is where they were placed. So for example, there's a campus where maybe the weakness there is math. And we had a coordinator that had that background and had the principal certification to be able to provide that support, then that is where they were placed. So again, it was very intentional.
So is that, the number five reclassification is a direct result of the reassignment of these?
That's the vice principal.
So I guess it's a direct result or an indirect result in that we're sending these individuals that were higher-paid individuals, let's call it what it is, right? So those current staff members that were there on campus. Yes, sir. We wanted to kind of bring them up as close as we could to these individuals that were coming up. So we think that it's going to have a very positive impact, right? You're getting more support. But at the same time, we're.
Equal.
We're trying to make as possible the individuals that are there. So you have both of those scenarios. It's going to make for a better morale situation, we feel.
Will their salaries, will the vice principal salaries and these individuals that were reassigned, will their salaries be equal?
No, ma'am, they'll be closer. They won't be equal. But here's the positive part to it. Any future pay raises will be at an equal level, right? So that part, we were able to adjust or fix going forward. So if we do, for example, if y'all do a 2% or 3% in the future, then each individual assistant principal will be at the same amount, getting the same amount and that particular pay raise.
I guess we'll see how it all pans out this year. I did get a few calls, a few concerns, but I'll discuss those with you after the meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, in general, exactly, scholastic achievement shouldn't change, I guess, from prior year? Or are we hopeful that it will impact?
Actually, we're expecting it to have a positive impact on our academic achievement and our student growth since we will now have more individuals that are able to provide more support, more staff development at the campus level. So we're expecting and foresee positive results from this change.
This is district level?
Correct. Well, every campus accountability results and their performance at, you know, at the end is all together at the district.
100% means not 40% of those.
Elementary, though, right?
Yeah, just in metric.
Right now, we're targeting elementary. Yes. And so there were actually, I were told 17, so there were actually 19. Was anyone that wasn't a part of CNI moved? We have two coordinators from the Instructional Technology Department that also, since they are instructional coordinators, which those are the individuals that we felt had the experience, if they had the principal certification to be able to do this job, to take on this role. So we do have two from Instructional Technology Department that are also going to be taking on this new assignment.
Anything else?
No, no, just applaud for this move. And you know, I want to thank those 17 or 19 positions, persons that are going to do this. And they're going to help the principals a lot and the whole district.
If I can add, when we met with all of CNI, we had three meetings about two weeks ago, I believe, just to go through what the plan was going to be. I'm not sure if that's me or you. But when we met with the actual individuals that were going to be reassigned, of course, you know, there was some uneasiness in the room. And, you know, there's some individuals that have been doing that job for a very long time, had not been at the campus for some time. But we also did receive some very positive feedback as well. We had one coordinator in particular who stood up, who had been an assistant principal before and had moved to CNI to say, you know what, I feel this is where we're needed and this is where we're going to be able to make a direct impact. So, you know, kind of encouraging, you know, the rest of the group. And I know that we've gotten some comments and some emails from some of the other individuals. And they ended up being 14, if I'm not mistaken? 15, 15, because the others are vacancies.
And three vacancies.
Right, the others are vacancies.
15 actual people.
15 actual people, yes.
When it was all said and done.
When it was all said and done. And so we have gotten some phone calls and some emails from some of the other individuals saying, you know, that they're excited about the change. You know, it was, again, change is not easy and we all know that. We've experienced that greatly this year. But at the end of the day, we kept our focus on the kids, our students. That was the focus. And our focus on assisting and supporting our campuses, which is where we need to make sure that we're putting all of our efforts, so.
And an important point also is that, you know, Ms. Benavides, Ms. Morales and I went personally to deliver the news. We weren't delegating that to anybody. We felt that it was important that they hear it from us and that whatever concerns that they had, that they would address them directly with us. So I think that that's an important point when you're delivering this type of uneasiness, that it come from the three of us to be able to let them know and reassure them that nothing's going to be impacted in their pay or their days or any of that stuff. As a matter of fact, we're asking them to step up and help us to be able to help these particular locations.
And if I could add just one more thing. I know we've been on this topic for quite some time, but we did share all of the information as far as the state of the state, right? And all of the headlines and, you know, different school districts that are actually cutting positions. And all of these positions are being cut at central office. It's rare that the campuses are being impacted, with the exception of one district that we know in Houston that actually did away with librarians, which is drastic, right? But all of the headlines that we've been seeing because of the state that we're in, because we have not been funded by the state, is, you know, school districts are moving to cut positions and they've all been at the district level, at central office. And so at the end of the day, you know, we reminded everyone that it would be a very different conversation that we would have to have with them had we been at that point. We're trying to avoid getting to that point, which again, I do commend Laida, Sam and everybody at, you know, business and finance and accounting to make sure that we're doing everything that we can now to make sure that that's not, you know, where we end up, but. Yeah, I think that's been a commitment of this board. Not during the pandemic, had we ever even considered. Letting anyone go. Exactly. I think Ms. Argila made a good point. At the end of the day, it's 15 people taking one from the team.
Yes.
So very good point, Ms. Argila.
We bend, but we don't break. We're not breaking yet.
And again, we thank you all for your support. We know and we knew that you all were going to get phone calls. And, you know, we also, you know, and Ms. Les has been meeting with staff as well. But at the end of the day, the focus was on kids, which we're trying not to, you know, again, 15 adults, but 14,000 students. You know, 20 campuses that we're going to be able to help, almost 20 campuses that we're going to be able to help. And that's where we remain, you know, steadfast and we feel very confident that this was the best decision for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Is there a motion to approve as recommended? Second, a motion to approve recommended by Mr. Montemayor, second by Mr. Castillo. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unopposed, motion passes. Item B is discussion possible action to approve for resolution for our wellness days for the 2024-2025 school year to support employee wellness and mental health.
Thank you, Mr. Valdez. It is recommended that the UISD Board of Trustees discuss and take possible action to approve board resolution to provide wellness days for the 24-25 school year to support employee wellness and mental health. It is no secret, right, that stress has become a common problem among our lives. One major contributor to this mental health issue is workplace stress. There is no doubt that that is out there, which often leads to employee anxiety and burnout. There are businesses out there that we've seen that look for ways to ease the stress on their employees. And many are utilizing mental health days as a key benefit to support both employee health and retention. We know locally that the city of Laredo offers two wellness days. And I think the Webb County also offers up to four days. And but at this point, let me just tell y'all, they earn them. They all do wellness activities. But at this point, we'd like to start this program with just going to go ahead and maybe grant the two days. It's equivalent, like let's say for a 10-year teacher, it's about $600 worth of days, you know? And so we are going to be putting some rules in place on how these days can be used. We have in our own employee handbook where there are limitations, even in our own personal days, that you can't take them before a holiday and things of that nature. But pretty much, it's almost like a no questions asked. You don't have to come with a doctor's excuse. It's just to step back from it. And so this is the resolution. We worked with our attorneys with it and we feel that this is, we feel very strongly that this would be something very positive for our staff, especially because it's, you know, you just adopted the compensation, right? And it's really not affecting everybody, but.
We hardly agree with you.
Yes, okay.
Motion to approve.
Perfect.
Just to be.
No need to.
Yes. Just to be clear, it is a pilot today, a year from today to see how it works out. If it works well, it'll probably be a more permanent benefit. But at this point, we want to see how this all works out for everybody.
I have a question regarding. Is it going to be putting out some moves as to how?
Yes, sir.
So I imagine it'll be up to the discretion of the employee to decide when to use these?
Yes, sir. So just like our policy addresses all of our personal sick leave days, it'll be a section for these particular days. But at the end of the day, the only date that is the employee's right is a sick leave day. We cannot challenge that at any time that they take it. But all other days, we can certainly have blackout dates. We don't want people to be out during testing. We don't want people to be out during specific times of the year. The only date that we can never challenge, just by rule and by law, is a sick leave day. Yes, sir.
The rest, now that you have the topic, the rest of the days, what other days do?
So you get personal leave, you get, in some cases, depending on the number of days that you have, non-contract days. There are other categories. And so we'll have a category for wellness, we're calling it wellness?
Yes, we will actually.
We'll have a category for.
You get state days, you get local days. But it all, at the end of the day, it's still an absence. It's just the way it's coded and the way we take off the days.
But is that the discretion of the employee to take it?
The non-contract days, no. Those days have to be negotiated with your supervisor. Vacation days, that's another one, you should talk to your supervisor because you don't want to have all your custodians leaving on the same time and then what are you going to do for the day, right? So, but your sick days, that's nondiscretionary. State days is nondiscretionary. If you're taking personal days, like if it's personal business, the rule says you got to notify your supervisor like three to five days in advance to get permission to take the day.
But you don't get told when to take your time off?
Well, it depends on which category we're talking about because you're talking in generalities.
Oh, you take your day off, but whether you get it paid or not, that's where this comes in the criteria.
Yeah, I was thinking about paid.
Well, we're going to try and.
Yes, sir.
For it to be as minimal requirement for this. So if somebody wants to take a wellness day, they can have it at the minimum where they can.
Yeah, well, I mean, we always work with our employees, sir. I mean, I want to be honest, we always work with them unless there's an extraordinary circumstance. We always ask that they get with their supervisor. So it's never been an issue, it's never been an issue.
And we're actually looking at mirroring what we do for personal days. So there's very few days that they cannot use personal days on. So it's just before, after a holiday, a state testing day, what's the other one? The beginning of a semester, I believe. And professional development days, that's pretty much it. So any other day you can do.
And just for clarification, at the end of your career, when you're retiring, when you're retiring, these are days that are not eligible to sell back, right? Because the whole purpose here is for you to take them to benefit yourself, right?
Use it or lose it.
Yes, yes, ma'am, at the end of your career, right? So that's.
Not here, do you?
They'll roll over if you don't use it.
Oh, they will roll over?
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
They just can't be bought back at the retirement. If you have a 10 years of service, retire from the district in TRS, they will not be eligible for buyback.
I just want to make it clear before y'all vote on it, right?
A motion for approval, what did you already do?
Second.
There's a motion and motion the second to approve as presented. Is there any further discussion? All is in favor, aye. All is opposed, unopposed, motion passes. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
Let us see discussion possible action to approve. Discussion possible action to approve broad resolution approving a one-time salary increase for the 2024-2025 school year.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Montemayor, a second by Ms. Oliveros.